There is a company from down here. They're out in the Midwest. It's a big company, 600 employees.
One hit, it's like it's starting to bring me down, right?
No, do they?
That's good. There you go. Set it down. There you go. Set it down. That's good.
Not plain. That's good.
Oh, that's your mouth.
Is that your shirt?
Oh, right.
Just stand on the other side.
Very similar. Except they had live wolves that they rescued. We bought the...
And we had a bear. A year ago, we ate there and a bear came out of the dumpster. Came out.
Animals are fun.
Fun, yeah.
Well, you guys can sit right here. Can I put this on your head?
On my head?
On your head. Because that's the only thing that doesn't hurt anything. But if you say something... You know, right? Yeah, just let it hit your head.
Let it turn around.
Put your hand. Don't put it on the inside.
I won't take it off anyway.
Or here?
Yeah, can I just set it there?
Yeah, you say. Just a little bit. Okay, that's good. This one's not going to sound for anybody.
Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three.
A little wine sign.
You've stuck a lot of them.
That's a familiar voice.
I think he's been trying to get a hold of you.
I'll call him.
It's one in there.
Yeah.
I trust you.
I know you should be okay.
How you got?
I'm surprised at all, I guess.
I find something to do every day. I'm not a crab.
But you find something useful.
Just get it off.
Sure.
Yeah. I finally got around to...
I like that setup.
Well, this is one of the ten parks and ships. It's just too big. I gotta find more wagons, so I got two of them. Yeah, good. I got most of sixty cut, sweating my little girl. Fifty-five, sixty.
Oh, you're ahead of the game.
Yeah.
Well, less than a year.
Yeah, last couple years. I actually had about this three or four.
No, I agree.
My guys, I am a...
Nice feeling, isn't it?
Yeah, but this don't take away from the bad feelings as well.
I kept it for a show.
You can't do that for long.
There are a couple of issues in that zoning ordinance that folks here tonight are going to be speaking about. We are the Town of Western Civic Affairs. Welcome to all the other towns out there that are watching tonight. That are concerned about maybe how their towns are being managed and maybe not receiving the kinds of information that you think you need to receive as constituents of your town. So, we're here with the town board. There's a pretty good size attendance here for the Town of Western. There's probably about twenty or so folks. And the town board is here. The highway superintendent isn't here. And the town clerk is also, is not here. So, but we're going to get started here with this meeting in about two minutes. So, welcome. As well, this, this isn't a, this isn't a funny thing. It's not a laughing matter. These are concerns of the taxpayer public in the Town of Western. And you can hear those folks now laughing about what we're talking about now, which is important to the people of Western. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Please try to spread the word.
I proudly concur the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we're going to be reviewing the zoning packet. The revisions made and open to public comments. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And the only comments that will be allowed and entertained are ones pertaining to the zoning law. So, is there any questions? Does anyone want to start?
Carol? I'd like to start with, unlike you folks, we, the public, give our names in order to address you and the public, while you can refuse the same request from the public that you serve. Current signs...
Excuse me, Carol, but we're going to talk about zoning.
Please, please, don't, don't... Can I get into it? I'm just getting into about the...
Well, we don't need any comments about what people are saying or...
Current signage regulations are not instituted in the Town of Western for lawn-type signs or public-private or town-wide ways.
I will close the meeting down unless the questions pertain to the zoning law.
Take it away, Carol.
That's what we're here for.
Take it away, Carol. Take it away. So... Upon communication to the state and county, highway, parks...
I will close the meeting down and nobody will be allowed to speak.
Or to those Western rural...
We're closed.
Or states, another sign road...
We're done. I'm not putting up with that.
Belonging to those entities, a legal responsibility to enforce their right of way.
Phil, would you like to say anything?
Per their right directives.
Well, give five minutes.
They do not have a right of way.
No, he doesn't have a right of way.
And either they enforce any...
Phil?
You're not talking.
...that may have against signage and right-of-way.
Well, I was upset by some of the crap.
Lawn signs or no...
These put it online and about our...
Safety concerning the right-of-way. State and county roads are much...
Misinformation where they were barking about...
...concerned that the town is not seeking what would be... Who the Town of Western would take on the expense illegally...
The commercial overlay came about because we knew we had to make the town more user-friendly. There's no...
What is the town does not implement a...
Individual that is prosperous.
Part of this non-vide...
That's a town-wide thing. And for this...
And so, since we moved the, the actual overlay in on the map...
Is there any discomfort with the board? Resisting lawsuits for undertreatment of...
It'll be reviewed as an individual basis by our own.
Can you explain why the town...
If somebody for commercial property comes in...
The new, the new...
I apologize to everybody that it's really difficult to hear people who are concerned...
The, the new law provides for a commercial overlay, but it is not specific to any area of the town. Anyone with property within the town can apply for a commercial overlay if they find it necessary.
Okay.
And, and we, we did that because we had to make the town more user-friendly. We lost out on a couple of reasonably good prospect businesses because it just took too frickin' long to, to work them through things. There, there, there's no one individual or group of individuals coming out ahead on this. As, as far as this crap online again, the, oh, I, I went to this seminar that says, oh, you gotta recuse yourself. In a community our size, if you recuse yourself, then you haven't got a forum to vote on. It, it's just crap. When is it gonna end? What is your agenda?
Okay, thanks, Phil. Rita, did you have anything you wanted to say, Phil?
I'm sorry, but the meeting was closed. You said you weren't holding it.
No, I changed my mind. I can't, yeah. Phil?
I'm good.
Okay. Pete?
So, you changed your mind just to allow your people to speak, not anybody else?
No, you did too. You chose not to see that zoning, so no.
Don, no comments from you unless you're asked to speak.
Steve, did you have anything to offer? Any questions on the zoning?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Davis, Brenda? Dwayne, Mrs. Dwayne? Anything?
Nothing, thanks.
Um, sir in the back?
I'll get it.
Sir?
Nothing.
Mike, with zoning?
Good.
Ma'am? Sir? Carl?
Just a couple of comments. This law is, this proposed law is the product of about four years' worth of work by the combined efforts of the planning and the zoning boards. And we have done our best to come up with a law that provides flexibility without over restricting anyone's use of their particular property. There are aspects of the law that have changed from the original one. We have tried to make them as reasonable as possible. We have tried to provide procedures within the law that anyone can follow and can look up. We have held all of our meetings publicly so that anyone could come in and see the deliberations that have been going on. It has been reviewed by professional planners from the Tug Hill Commission, as well as a couple of outside towns who have offered a few comments back, nothing of any substance. So, the only comment that I had seen, and this is long past, was that the planning board was trying to ram this law through. And I'm sorry, but ramming something four years old, I'm sorry, is an inappropriate comment. So, the efforts of the planning board and the zoning board, I, I think have been exemplary in putting this law together for you.
Yes, thank you for your time. Mark?
So, to get this correct, the zoning overlay, according to Mr. DeFranco just said shortly ago, it's not one particular area in the town. It could be moved around to whatever property owner would request it. Is that what I'm hearing?
That, that's correct. The, the commercial overlay and the planned development residential overlays are similar. Anyone can apply for those, and there is a process defined within the law as to how to do it.
So, is there any difference between a commercial and residential overlay?
Yes.
What's the difference?
If you look up in the law, you can, if you read the law, you can find out what it is. The residential overlay is primarily for higher-density residential areas, focused primarily on what they call cluster development that allows smaller individual lots while retaining more area available for that particular development.
Now, is this commercial overlay also variable where it can be moved? Or is that a fixed site in the village here?
No, it, it, we removed that from the thing. There is no designated commercial overlay on the map. It is a process by which you can apply for a commercial use where it might not normally be permitted. Now, let me also emphasize that we have reduced the number of zones within the town. And the three residential, seasonal, agricultural, and rural zones were pretty much combined. And for the most part, there are very few uses within the town that are not permitted or at least permitted with a special use permit in there. So, the probability of someone actually coming in with a commercial use request is relatively small.
Now, does the zoning over, or zoning law also incorporate the restriction of the signage?
Yes, there's an entire section there on, on what signs are permitted, where they're permitted. And I emphasized the last time we had this discussion. There is a paragraph in there that states specifically that the regulation of signs does not depend on the content of the sign. It is strictly as a sign, period.
Okay, but why do we gotta regulate signs? Why, why are we getting to the point that we're telling landowners, homeowners, what they can and can't have and where they can and can't have it when they're paying the taxes?
There's, there's no difference between the current one and the, the new one, other, uh, the current one and the new one, other than the fact that we've clarified some of the things that were a little fuzzy in the last one.
Right.
There's, there's, there's already an existing sign regulation. All we're doing is continuing it and providing more clarity.
Because if I remember at the meeting you last had, you said you were making it more restrictive than New York State. My understanding, state law trumps local law.
No.
At times, except for in a finite period where there's a vested interest by the local government that far outweighs the state. I'm sure Mr. Attorney could answer that.
No, you, you're absolutely wrong. New York State has a municipal home rule law, local law, local laws. Is, is...
Which is?
The municipal home rule law says that the local laws supersede, take precedence over state law.
Okay. With that being said, so why would we want to be more restrictive? I, I, you know, if we're an open and free society, why are we putting all the restrictions on everybody? Because if I remember, Mr. Wilbur in the meeting, he said, let's use common sense. If it's a garage sale sign, a little bit in the way, let's leave it there. If it's political sign, no, no, no. Well, that's selective enforcement. That's discrimination, and it's a huge lawsuit for this village. You either apply the law equally across the board, or this whole law needs to be deep-sticked, and this whole town board should be. Because if you can't treat everybody equally, it's ridiculous.
You have a right to an opinion, but the law, the, the law regarding signage has been on the zoning law for a long time. They're not restricting it based on the content. It's where the signs are placed, as I understand it.
You weren't at the last zoning board meeting to hear the conversation, either, were you?
They may have had a conversation, but it's not in this law. It, I don't, but the law state, the zoning states where signs can be placed. They're not telling you you can't put a sign on your lawn. They're telling you where, not only that, within the restrictive from the access on county roads, town roads, state roads, it has to be so far off the, the, in that section of property.
Right, so you are telling them where we can place it.
That's just common sense so that it's not in the way of construction.
See, that's the same thing Mr. Wilbur said, use common sense.
Okay, we can go, thank you for your comment. But, sir, do you have anything to say? In the back? Yeah.
I, I do have one thing to add or consideration. I'm familiar with some of the new zoning law stuff, and I'm generally supportive of it. My only concern is with regards to this, uh, the commercial overlay and when it's particularly, what it might be granted. My, my concern relates to allowing neighborhood property owners, the ones who would be impacted by said change, ample opportunity to voice an opinion.
Carol, can you address that? The, the part of the process of the commercial overlay, or the sequence, is that the property owner will make a formal request of the town board to establish that commercial overlay. The town board then forwards that to the planning board to review and make a recommendation. After that is complete, the town board will then vote on whether or not to grant it. The planning board gets to consider all of the aspects of the use, which would include the effect on the neighborhood. There's a whole list of things that have to be shown and a whole list of submissions that have to be brought with it. If the town board votes to approve the commercial overlay, the owner still has to come in front of the zoning board of appeals and request a special use permit. And in that special use permit, we can spell out specific conditions that have to be met and observed if that request is going to be granted. So, it's not like it's done in a vacuum. There are a whole bunch of considerations. And in order to grant the special use permit, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing and receive public comments.
My single follow-up question. Is it necessary for, you know, how, how do the homeowners understand what's going on, the neighborhood, rather? Is it necessary to really start attending every meeting to see what's going on? Will these potential variances be posted to the website? What's the process there? So, people are given an opportunity versus just it happens and you might miss it?
If you're on, if within a neigh, if in the neighborhood or a neighboring property, you'll be notified of a public hearing?
Neighboring property, neighboring, neighboring makes sense. But the question becomes on how far out, right? Two properties down, three, as far as a j... So, it's possible that some things might impact far beyond just a single neighboring property. That's my only concern.
Well, hopefully, neighbors will be talking. You know, I mean, we notify the people within, that are in, around the area of it.
As a resident, excuse me, as a rural area, there's sometimes some good space between some of the, you know, nearby owners. That's my only concern.
The public hearing would be on the website?
Advertised.
Had advertised in the paper?
As well as potential, if, if I wanted a variance, would that be posted? That, you know, so-and-so is coming up requesting a variance today? I mean, how, what's, so I'm seeing, yes, okay.
Any other question?
Yeah?
No, it's not your turn yet. Um, there's another gentleman in the hall. Does he want to speak? Does he have a question?
Even over there, say, Carol.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that.
It's over there.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Klinger?
No, I'm all set.
Ma'am?
I'm good, I'm here for the town meeting, that's all.
Okay. Don, you're only getting two minutes, and you're better asking zoning questions. Two, three, if you're asking zoning, nothing if you're not gonna ram.
Uh, so, you should have listened to Carol, because she, she talked about the zoning. You didn't give her that opportunity, and that was extremely unfair.
Again, zoning.
Was there any consideration by the town board, the ethics board, or any other board or committee in the town of the ethical concerns of conflict of interest in the deliberations of the zoning ordinance's passage to the town board by the zoning board or the planning board and its members? That, members, that ordinance containing a commercial overlay that could provide a financial gain or profit to those folks appointed to those boards owning viable commercial property in those areas covered by that commercial overlay...
There's no more commercial overlay, Dan.
They wanted to pass on to the town board. Please, let me finish.
There's no commercial overlay, so it's a new question.
As well, was there any discussion of any, or consideration by any ethics board or town board or any other board on those folks on the town board owning commercial property in those areas or viable commercial property in those areas covered by the commercial overlay that would be voting to approve that ordinance? Was there? You're not gonna answer me, that's okay.
There is no commercial overlay.
Those properties are...
You didn't even give me an answer.
Those properties are viable.
Don, there's no commercial overlay, so there's nothing to be...
So, your question and your statement are all false.
So, you took that away?
There is no...
No commercial overlay.
I said, there is no designated commercial overlay.
Did you remove it?
Yes, I removed it.
When did you remove it?
Prior to last meeting. After the town board said they were...
Do you have it posted online for the people?
It has been posted online since I revised the map three weeks ago. It has been on there. It was actually before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've got a conflict of work. Okay, here we go. We, the public, disagree with context of the zoning ordinance as it relates to the comprehensive plan that comprehensive plan in place in order to provide a basis for the implementation, implementation of the zoning ordinance, not the other way around. You put the horse behind the cart on this one, folks, okay? Here, the town has put the bucket for the horse by generating an all encompassing zoning ordinance based on objection and Lindsay, not using a tiered approach to a zoning ordinance based on the town's comprehensive plan of 2019. Case in point, the comprehensive plan.
Is there a question more than that somewhere?
Objectives, enhance the appropriate recreation opportunities at the Wash River corridor and Delta Lake, and protect environmental quality from overdevelopment practices. As in two and four above, the implementation of a commercial overlay, which you don't have, right? Is that true?
Yeah.
Okay.
And who did you need to speak in behalf of the public?
There you go.
Attractiveness of Western for development, that's fine, because there is no commercial overlay.
You're all done, your three minutes are off, thank you, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We'll start the town board meeting in ten, eleven minutes.
So, uh, let me start that over again. In this twenty-minute public hearing, one of the members of the public that needed to speak concerning the signage, uh, changes to the signage law, wasn't allowed to speak in this meeting by the town supervisor here, because she didn't like what she was saying. Her actual comments were concerning the signage, uh, issues. Current signage regulations are not instituted in the town of Western for lawn-type signs, public, private, town right-of-way. So, the page and a half that she was reading concerned the signage ordinance in the town, and she wasn't allowed to speak on that. So that really puts a, a very bad taste in the mouths of the people in the town of Western when they are abruptly silenced in a public hearing against being able to state their comments less than three minutes in a public hearing. Now, not only did she silence this person from speaking, but then she said they were closing the meeting altogether, ignored that statement, and then continued the meeting while that person was continuing to read that three-minute statement. Of course, her three-minute statement concerning those signing concerns, signage concerns that she had, were not heard by the public, and they weren't heard by the board, because they didn't want those concerns to be read, they didn't want those concerns to be heard, and the town board basically censored that person sitting in that chair from speaking. This is a very odd arrangement in a town like the town of Western, a small agricultural community town where the town is bullying the people by censoring them in the middle of a public hearing for their statements concerning the issue at hand, which is the addition of signage ordinances inside a, a zoning ordinance for the town of Western. Now, I believe they know that they shouldn't have censored Carol in this meeting, but this is live streamed to Facebook, it's streamed to seven to ten towns in the area, and this is not going to go away. This is going to come back to hurt this town, all the public here, and this board, and this board attorney for allowing that to continue while everybody, including those at home, are watching that censoring take place. This is a really crazy thing. I would, I would have never thought that this would happen in the town of Western, that the town supervisor would actually censor in public in front of these folks. Here. In front of all of these folks. That they would censor a member of the public from being able to speak at a public hearing. Truly, truly amazing to see this happen. So we have about seven more minutes to get back to that. The other, the other interesting point I wanted to bring up here is that, the, uh, the changes to the zoning law that basically said they're removing the overlay is quite disturbing. Uh, and, and the whole game was that we were going to present concerns as the public for a zoning, a commercial overlay that basically doesn't exist. So the town board wanted to surprise the folks in the meeting, myself included, by stating out of nowhere, hey, there is no more commercial overlay. The question is, if there is no more commercial overlay that is going to cause problems in the town, then what are they supplementing that with? If that overlay is totally gone and there is no more word, or wordage, or substantiating information in the upcoming zoning ordinance relating to a commercial overlay, that's fine and good. But I have a sneaking suspicion that this town isn't going to settle for that. There was a reason why that commercial ordinance was put into place. We personally believe that it was to benefit those members of the community that did own or do own property in those commercial overlay areas, and those members of the board that own those viable commercial properties in that area that the commercial overlay is going to be placed in, or would have been placed in. Uh, and those people that served on the zoning and planning board for the four years that that, uh, that zoning ordinance was designed and built, those folks that made the decision to push for that zoning ordinance as well own land in those overlay, commercial overlay areas. So, uh, the town really didn't explain to the people very well that they did remove that zoning overlay. And I think based on the, some of the comments that we got from folks surrounding the area here, and, and our comments about those, uh, those potential conflicts of interest, that the town abruptly removed that, uh, commercial overlay from that zoning ordinance. Uh, and, and of course, at the same time, the, uh, town supervisor, Anna Riddell Weaver, used that as a means to, again, censor the public, preventing them from speaking, stating, here, you can sit right here, I'm gonna sit here, okay? Uh, that, uh, do you want to sit? That she used that opportunity where a member of the public, myself, was speaking, but she could say, the town supervisor could say, that I was not, uh, covering portions of my comment that were inclusive in the zoning ordinance because the commercial overlay was removed. So she wanted to basically censure me from speaking, which is okay. Uh, if that's, if that's your thing, that's certainly not ours. I, town's, uh, I, I Way Supervisor, Highway Sup, Superintendent, I should say, Preston Smith. So, uh, we didn't get to read our concerns with respect to the signage here. It's really totally a, in our opinion, it's totally based on politics, and they didn't want to get into it. And that is why they basically censored Carol in her statements, to prevent those issues from being addressed. Lawn signs, I'll, I'll just cover quickly, are not, uh, in the sign ordinance as it stands today. The town board did remove a political sign while leaving business signs on the right-of-way. They did write, uh, folks, rights in the First Amendment to free speech. Uh, and, and so now they want to stay away from that at all costs. They don't want anybody to speak of that, that has any firsthand knowledge of that activity, although the videos are placed online for, uh, for everyone to see, either YouTube or on Facebook live streams in the town of Western, if you want to look at that. Our concern is, you know, what would behoove the town to take on the expense and the legal liability and litigation from absorbing the responsibility of, uh, enforcing lawn-type temporary signage for campaigns or garage sales? Why would the town want to take on, absorb those, those issues and the responsibility of managing those right-of-ways for the, for New York State and for the counties? It's really beyond our ability to comprehend why they would want to do that. I'm sure the taxpayers do not want to spend additional monies in the town of Western to, uh, enforce, uh, the state and the county responsibilities for maintaining their own right-of-ways. Why does the town, these folks here? Why would they even consider taking on the responsibility? And why would they consider having the taxpayer public take on the responsibility financially of, of, uh, of enforcing a signage ban, if you will, on lawn signs, which the state and the county state are not dangerous, are not an impediment to traffic or flow, are not a safety issue? So the town has no real reason to institute that, uh, signage wording inside the zoning ordinance? The only thing that we can think of is that they want to prevent their arbitrary actions performed when they did re, remove a political sign while leaving commercial signs up. They don't want that to happen again, because they know that they could be sued over that, and they very well could be sued over that last situation on March, I should say, on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, when they indeed did break a constituent's civil rights by removing that sign. So, uh, we've got about one minute left, we're going to get back to the meeting here. So, thanks for joining us, Town of Western Civic Affairs. We'll get on to that meeting, it's gonna start in just a minute, thanks so much.
A approval of the minutes from, from the previous board meeting? Any, any concerns, any questions?
No, they're good.
No.
A motion to accept them?
I'll make the motion that we accept the meeting.
A second?
I'll second it.
Okay. I'll, I'll. Bills submitted by the town clerk?
Um, highway fund, thirty thousand two hundred fifty-nine and fifty-nine cents. General fund was five thousand nine hundred seventeen and forty-seven cents, with a total of thirty-six thousand one hundred seventy-seven and six cents. Motion to do it.
I'm expecting to pay the bills of the guy.
All in favor? Supervisors, you're for. General fund balance as of eight thirty-one is one million five hundred ninety-six dollars, two hundred and, five hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. The highway fund has five hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars. Reserves are ninety-five thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Reserve machinery is a hundred and twenty thousand. The fire protection, protection district is seven hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Um, cash is nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, seventy-two cents, for a total of two million three hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Any questions? Motion to accept?
I'll make motion to accept.
A second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Preston?
Yeah, um, we did our normal storm cleanups when needed. We got pretty lucky though, Rome devastated, Lee got hired, you know, up north, has been getting hammered. Uh, we repaired and serviced equipment when needed, ditching and shoulderings ongoing, it's a never-ending battle. Uh, we've installed a lot of culverts, replaced, some were new. Few road repairs, we graded the dirt roads, second round of mowing is nearing completion. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, for correspondence, there wasn't, there wasn't any this week, or this month, I should say. Foil requests?
Uh, yeah, for foil requests, uh, the town clerk received seven foil requests, taking a total hours of two point five hours to work on those for a cost of sixty-two dollars and fifty cents to the town.
Okay. Thank you. Is Tug Hill?
Yes.
Oh, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Joe is back.
I am back, back behind the pole. Okay, um, the, uh, NYC ACC Conference on the Environment. The Tug Hill Commission is hosting this year's annual conference. It's focused on renewable energy, natural resources, economy, and opportunities. The environment and recreation and tourism. Conference includes three days of webinars, field trips to local interest, areas of local interest, a cocktail hour reception, and it coincides with the Tug Hill Commission Annual Dinner. And it's the next on the agenda. September eighteenth consists of the virtual portion of the conference from eight-thirty to three-forty, including a session for high school students and grant writing workshop. The day ends with a social hour at five-thirty, and that's at the Woodlands Farm Brewery in Boonville. On the nineteenth of September, it'll be a day, a day of field trip opportunities, visiting a few of the unique areas in Tug Hill, uh, that the region offers. Field trips begin at eight-thirty, lunch is provided. And the conference reception and Tug Hill Commission Annual Dinner will be combined and held at the Hay Loft at Moonshine Farm in Port Lyden after the field trips. And that's, so the social hour is starting at five. On Friday the twentieth, they'll conclude with a morning field trip to the fore, the tour Brookfield's renewable hydroelectric facility and view the beautiful Trenton Falls area. Falls is usually open to the public once a year, but it's being opened especially for this trip. Uh, you can check out the other options in that offer on the, in the announcements you receive. And as I said, the Tug Hill Commission Annual Dinner, Thursday the nineteenth. Uh, cost is thirty dollars per person, and that's at, uh, the Hay Loft in Port Lyden. And the response date is, uh, they'd like you to receive by October eighteenth. If you could. I shouldn't say October eighteenth. September eighteenth. Okay. Uh, municipal benefits of GPS mapping, and that's September twenty-sixth. Uh, Tug Hill Commission, uh, will present a free workshop showcasing the numerous benefits of GPS mapping in your municipality on Thursday the twenty-sixth, eleven AM at the Town Lee Hall Center, or Lee Town Hall Center. Coffee and donuts will be provided for all that attend. To register, you can call John Hill or contact the Tug Hill Commission. And on September thirtieth, there's a town clerk lunch and learn. And it's gonna be, uh, the goal where the fiscal responsibilities of the town clerk, hybrid workshop on Monday the thirtieth, noon to one-thirty, and as I said, Town of Trenton. No call session features a free lunch for those attending in person. And if you're interested, uh, you need to, uh, they would like you to respond by September twenty-fifth. And then, uh, we're back to dinners. And it's gonna be held right in our backyard here. This is October twenty-fourth, invitations are being emailed for the Northern Island County Council of Governments Fall Dinner and Meeting, which will be held Thursday, October twenty-fourth, at the Woods Valley Ski Area. Last year it was held there. It was highly rated by those in attendance. I expect the same this year. Cash bar and social hour start at six-thirty with buffet dinner and meeting to follow. Cost is thirty dollars per person, and reservations are requested by October eighteenth. And that is all I have for the season.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Christina? Um, so the library.
Um, so the library has coming up a couple of very exciting quilting classes, so now's the time to register, if anyone's interested, they are starting, you know, they're, I don't have, I don't have a hard date in front of me, but, um, if you're interested in registering or finding out more, definitely contact the library, um, because we're pretty excited about those. Uh, we're also looking at possibly hosting one more takeout dinner for the year, so we're finalizing any details, seeing if that's possible, so stay tuned for more information. We'll put information on, um, we've got a website on the Mid York app, so if anyone's interested, we should be putting out details for that soon. Uh, the library is also participating in Mohawk Valley Gives again this year, which, um, I'm sure many of you were supporters in previous years, and we really appreciate that. But basically, if you haven't seen it before, it's kind of like a GoFundMe for nonprofits. They do it every September twentieth, every year, so, um, it's basically just donations, especially for people who are looking to, towards the end of the year, charitable donations for tax purposes, um, a lot of nonprofits participate, but you can either donate directly at the library, right at the front desk, um, or you can go to the website, which is givemb.org and search for Westernville, which actually you'll also notice that the Westernville Fire Department, the volunteer fire department's doing it this year. So it's exciting to see all the nonprofits being able to go directly to, go directly to the people for fundraising, so we're pretty excited about that. Um, and finally, just a reminder that the library takes bottles and cans, uh, five cent deposit model and cans all year, it's one of our annual fundraisers, so if anyone has anything to drop off, anytime, right at the library, we love potatoes.
Okay. Thanks.
You have been thrown?
We're fine with that.
Mr. DiBaggio, did you have anything to add?
I have a couple things, as a matter of fact, um, and I don't know if you're aware of the Septic System Repair Replacement Grant, um, did you get an email on that?
No, I didn't.
Oh, that's funny, because, um, not that it's funny, but Jonathan from AOK, I was talking to him about it, and he got an email, and I believe Lee got an email as well, but anyways, uh, it's fifty, a fifty percent reimbursement up to ten thousand dollars, okay? Oneida County Health Department is accepting applications. I had a person ask me today, which I have to text out, and they said that they didn't send a five hundred dollar charge for an application review, I don't know if that's true, but, um, as soon as I get an answer, um, I'll pass that out. But anyways, uh, included, there's a map, included in the priority areas would be Big Brook Tributary, Delta Reservoir, Roma's Reservoir, and Mohawk River Tributaries Upper and Lower. So, I think we're in the correct, you know, uh, in, correct geographical area, um, it's two hundred thousand dollars, and they said that the program is going to, um, ends two thousand twenty-seven. I would seem to think of, at two hundred thousand dollars, if you make twenty applications, they got ten thousand, this money's going to go quickly. So, if you, uh, have any questions in regards to that, Oneida County Health Department, um, I have the telephone number, or, you know, email environmentalhealth@ocgov.net, okay? So that's, uh, that's the first thing I have. The second-
Is that map, uh, public anywhere?
Yeah.
You can find it on the-
You can get it at this website, the, uh, environmentalhealth@ocgov.net, or if you just, I think if you just, uh, got into Oneida County Health Department, you know, if you Googled that, uh, you could navigate your way around to, uh, to find more details on that program, okay? So, and I think, personally, I just think time is of the essence, I really believe that, uh, because, you know, you have the Henley Reservoir involved, there's, you know, I just wrote down what, you know, you know, what areas we had in this particular area, but there are other areas, so, you know, I, I seem to think it's going to be a competitive thing to, uh, take advantage of, so, um, you know, that's where, that's what I have on that. The other thing is, uh, you know, sales tax revenue, um, which is the county's largest, um, source of revenue, July there were four point two, um, sixteen million dollars, and through July, we had collected a hundred and twelve million, um, it's a two point five million dollar increase, two point three percent. You know, if you want to make a comparison, the state was, um, up point two to, from one point eight bil, one point eight one billion to one point eight two billion, so, you know, that's, that's good news. That tax revenues for the second quarter, um, those were up forty-three thousand dollars, or six and a half percent increase, and I think that's largely due to the, um, the next semester when they had the Women's World Hockey Tournament there. So, and the last thing that I have, and this is all, and this is just income, which is all good news, because we're up, the Oneida Nation Gaming revenues for the second quarter, um, every time, like thirty-seven thousand dollars, but that's off five point seven million, five point seven six million to five point seven four million, um, projected, uh, well, so far for twenty twenty-four, eleven point four million dollars from the Oneida Nation, and projected to be twenty-three million for the year, and that's not counting the state's annual two point five million that, uh, they collect, that we get from the state. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now Matt, from the Democratic Committee?
Yes.
Wanted a couple.
Uh, so, uh, recently, the, uh, the Republican, uh, uh, party for the Town of Western spoke about what they do for the town, so, uh, someone suggested I should, uh, apply for equal time, so here I am. Uh, I'm the town chair for the Democratic Party, uh, also the only committee member of the Democratic Party, uh, and have been for the last seven years, um, and as that, as a executive committee member for Oneida County, uh, I interview, uh, different candidates for the Democratic Party that run within our, our district. Um, I also, uh, uh, pester, uh, local Democrats every year for signatures, so that Democratic Committee Member, or our Democrats can appear on the ballots each fall. Uh, any, anybody running for office, um, has to have a certain number of signatures to appear on the ballot, so, uh, it falls on me to, uh, uh, bother the dwindling number of Democrats in the, in the Town of Western to, uh, uh, for their signatures, um, and, uh, beyond that, uh, uh, I try to at least make sure that, uh, the candidates, uh, that we put forth every year, uh, hold Town of Western-type values when we, uh, we, uh, make sure that they, uh, uh, come, uh, come on the ballot, so. Pretty much it. Does anybody got any questions?
Will you accept an independent as a candidate?
Uh, we have accepted other, other party candidates, uh, usually we ask them to at least register as a Democrat when we put them on the ballot, uh, but that's really it. Um, we have definitely had a few, uh, Republicans who have switched their party allegiances or independents who have switched their party allegiances, uh, to appear on the ballot. Um, it's not really, we don't, we don't take a blood oath, uh, we don't, we don't, we don't, uh, do anything like that to appear on the ballot, it's just, uh, as long as you're willing to register as a Democrat, that's really all that they ask.
Okay, thanks, man.
Yeah.
And to old business, the first-
Yeah, before we do, um, we had some questions about, I should have brought up a bit of your report, but about the funding from moving the funds.
Oh, I was going to go into business.
Okay.
The first order of business for old business is, um, the zoning law. Um, tonight, I believe we're ready to pass, to go on passing it. Is there's any other comments from the board, questions?
Certainly appreciate it all, but very difficult, hard work, difficult to do.
So can I have a motion to accept the?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, um, what's the process going to be? You'd have to file a-
I have to file it with the Secretary of State, so I've got to have it.
Yes, we are. So, Captain-
I'll have to drive it on.
The version on the website should be without, but I will make sure you change this. Yeah, I will, I will mail you one that doesn't have any, any markups or anything, and I'll also mail you a copy of the map as well.
Yeah, that's good.
So then what I'll do is, or, once you get the official one back, then we can load that up to the website.
Well, nothing will come back, they just file it with the Secretary of State, they send a letter back saying it's been filed. But a lot of times it's eight or ten weeks before they send the letter back.
Okay. So if you need help with putting that final version out there?
You can, you can assume that what I sent today, that they will have gotten it within four or five days after I sent it in. When they send me the letters, like eight weeks later, it says, well, you know, we got your, your local law's been filed on September, you know, twelfth or whatever, or fifteenth or whatever it's going to be, uh, but there's a lot of times in November before I, you know, before I get the letter that says that it was filed in September, so.
On the table of contents, Article fourteen is just missing on the table of contents.
Anything else? Um, for the condemned buildings tonight, we, um, we now have, we have the letter, Charlie gets written the letter, and it'll be sent out to Mr. Maury, um, to receive it ten days prior to our next meeting, which is October fourteenth at seven PM, so we'll have to put a public, um-
No, please.
We don't have to do a public hearing, but, okay. My mistake. So, it'll be on the agenda for next month. Um, there's no new updates on the other two properties, I spoke, or I emailed Scott today, and he didn't have anything new to add.
How come he's never here, Scott, the codes officer, ever? Isn't that his job?
He was here the last month, but.
Scott works on Monday evenings.
Two years.
So, that's all I have there. Um, we did have the repairs completed to the town hall, um, by Mike Perkins, was it his name, Mike Perkins? Um, on the ramp and on the railing, um, have we had any success in finding a painter?
Now we can clear it up a bit.
We're going to put it up.
With the same specs that we used the last time.
Okay. Thank you. And then under new business, tonight we have, we need to update the town clerk's office, we, Missy has been, um, looking at the software that is highly recommended by the county that we use for the marriage license, death certificates, dog licenses, everything that Missy takes care of, and it will be, it then becomes digitalized, and it's easier to track and, and correct when there's been errors in past information. She looked at two companies, one was Edmonds, and they sent a proposal out, and, um, the other company is Williamson, who does our tax, has our tax package, and the, um, the Williamson package, uh, both Larry and I sat in on the demonstration from both companies, and, um, uh, the Williamson prac, the package was definitely the better software package, easier to follow along for Missy to use, and it goes into our system, so that is the one that we're recommending. So Williams, the Williamson package, the purchase price is four thousand five hundred and forty dollars, with an annual support cost of one thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. So, total for three, for, um, that should have been, year three. Um, so the total for three years would be nine thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. There is, I believe, a startup, like, uh, an hour's startup fee of like six hundred, is this the one? Of six hundred dollars or that. So that's the package she prefers compared to, um, Edmonds, which is a three-year bundle package of annual fees of three thousand three hundred dollars, um, basic bundle implementation was one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and the one year, first year investment would be five thousand fifty dollars for it. Missy can answer any questions that you guys might have, hopefully.
Just so you're comparing where?
Exactly.
What is software?
So just so everybody on board is comparing apples to apples, so if you break it down for, like you said, three years' cost, for the Williams, the total cost for three years would be nine thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars, whereas Edmunds is actually more expensive. For three years, it would be a total of eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, oh yeah, I forgot to say that.
So it's home, like twenty-five hundred dollars cheaper over three years.
And we're using your system right now?
Right, for the financial-
Right, for the taxes.
So that one can feed in, or vice versa.
They can feed each other.
This, it would, um, do, we don't need like the bingo component, component or games of chance, we only have one license per year for that, but it would do the dog licenses, marriage licenses, um, keep track of Missy's money, a cash book on it, and any other revenues that she takes in, like for permits and that.
They provide support.
Yes.
And plus Williams is from New York State, so there's more app to, I mean, changes quicker than New York State changes anything related to marriage, license, and dog licenses, stuff like that.
Yeah, they only deal with New York State, where Edmunds is across the country. So any other questions, thoughts on it?
We already have it for our financial, you said, right? What about our, what about our tax collection? What? Do we have any program that-
Yeah, that's through the county. The same thing that the county uses, or the one that we're required to use for the county, I think, along, along that line, we got it several years ago.
I mean, a lot of towns, you can pay your taxes online, um, and, and anytime you need a duplicate receipt or anything like that, you can get it online, um, do, do you know if, if our program does that, or, or like that?
Well, then, I don't know for sure, but probably Williams has tax collecting software, they probably do that, I know this is going-
Yeah, I think they do, because some tax, some town clerks do the taxes, so they did talk about that they had it, but we didn't talk, we didn't do it because it, we didn't need it for Missy's software, we didn't listen to it.
It's something we could look into, I know, it's, when we got that software for the tax collector, probably five, six, seven years ago, it was something that would feed directly into the county, and it was one that they recommended or something like that, but, you know, we can research that, it's a good idea to see, you know, if there's some better way to do it.
So, um, can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion that we purchase, uh, the Williams package, uh, my opinion it's a better package, plus it's actually cheaper for the town than the other package, so I'll make that motion that we purchase the Williams package.
Do you have a second? All in favor? Thank you. And the next order of new business is for the, um, we need to transfer monies from our DA three nine six zero account, which is where the SEMA disaster egg monies go into, and transfer it to our D- and transfer it to our DPA 5110.4. And I, it's like 218,000, is that?
Well, actually, I think we gotta handle it a little bit differently than what he mentioned.
Than how Ben said to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause, um, I was also looking at the reports that we just got today. From the warrant, the money that Preston spent on the roads. On the warrant, he had the right line item, but then took it out of, uh, the seasonal roads. So that went way into the negative. Cause that's the one that he was recommending that we move, that went into. However, you don't move money in the budget, you don't move it from a revenue account into the expenditure.
Right.
You actually move it from unexpendable balance. Cause that money went into basically the highway fund. And that's part of the highway checking account, which is really unexpendable balance.
Okay.
So, um, in my conversation with Preston just a little while ago, what I would recommend is having Ben correct where he pulled that money last month.
Okay.
It was, I don't know, I'd have to look at, I thought I had it printed here, the warrant last month. Well, he, he took it out of the 5110.5 and it should have come out of 5112.2. Yeah, on the warrant last month, it was correct.
Wait a minute, he took it where, Preston, 5110.?
Five.
That's what the warrant said last month. And he actually took that out of the warrant account. So the warrant, the warrant is correct. And he took it out of the 5110.5 account.
Okay.
So he needs to correct that. And then for the FEMA money, what we want to do is, anytime Preston self, uh, spends money that earmarked for that, he's tracking that in his own records. And what we would do is, um, he would decide which account that comes out of, out of the expenditures. And then we'll monitor this and then we'll add money from the unexpendable balance into that account to make sure that we don't go into the negative.
Right.
That's the way we should handle it.
Okay. So.
For now, all we need to do is have him correct his mistakes.
Correct this. So he doesn't need to transfer those FEMA monies over because didn't earmark them?
Right.
Okay.
Yep. Does that mean?
Because certain bills have to be paid with those monies when it came to the, um, Mr. Hope and Harvey materials.
Right, cause you'll have one.
Materials. It had to come out of this, the actual FEMA monies that we received.
Right. So Preston's tracking that all in his books.
Right.
And then as the money's coming out of our budget line, as that goes negative, we'll transfer more funds in to, from the unexpendable balance to cover. So we all stay watch.
Okay. Cause you had asked me to have a mark, not data and market that we were using those monies. So that's what we were, these are plenty to do.
Yeah.
Okay. So do we need to have, do anything tonight?
No, actually, we don't need a motion, just, we just gotta decide the account to make, correct his mistake.
Okay. Um, next, any other business?
Does everybody understand that?
Did anybody? No, he didn't. He just came to see us. Did anybody have anything else for business? Uh, we're now going into executive session to discuss a high, highway personal, personnel issue.
With respect to who or what?
You gotta, you gotta be more specific on what you're, what you're going into executive session for.
Okay. We're going in to discuss, uh, change, possible change to their contract.
Who, whose?
The Highway Department.
Highway Department.
Thank you.
Who are you inviting?
We're inviting Preston and the board members and you.
I just wanted to clear out the record.
Yeah, thanks.
It's up to you. I mean, the fireworks normally start after they get back.
Nobody's coming to the building. James, that is, he's the commissioner applying for the counter. Well, I sent him a text. So I'm waiting for his response, which usually is pretty good. And my text didn't go through. So I don't know what to get. I think I pulled you, I said, you should mail, but this is bad to send again. I told him to have an engine from you before we left. You know, but, uh, I'll get a whole game. $300. $50. Situation can go.
Like the ones by mine now, four or five.
How far over the water did you?
Well, the question, they keep. Kelly. Are you within 250 feet of the grid?
Oh. Yeah. Oh, it's right there on the.
Yeah, they, I would have limited.
So I'm off, buddy.
Yeah. It's a limited problem.
I mean, good, eight, I don't know, it won't like 2,000. So I don't, I replaced my septic tank three years ago. Matter of fact, Challenger.
You qualify, you get 50%.
No, it's all clay. It's not drainage.
It is incredible. I mean, freaking.
From that.
I mean, that, that is amazing when you drive by there. I mean, can you stop? It's just very. Oh my God.
To help them get some business. He's so busy though. I don't know. They put one in for me for you. Man, they.
Looks like they're having an executive session. So glad that they forced in a specific site. Exactly. Why they're flying slightly. It's like skating. I was back there. She saw us. I'm doing extra work.
Oh, I sent it to. They pulled it out, it's like Swiss cheese. It was the clay that was all they had to get.
What is me, I want to. When you went into every, with Mr. Pratt, uh, the Democrats, every, every chair in the town of Western, we were the Democratic Committee. He's one of the best. It was trying to maintain a Democratic, uh, town of Western. So your interest, I just, I'm sorry. Things that were alive over the last 19 months or so. I'd say about 65% on the Republicans, 35% on the Democrats. Now, I've got 75% for, it's 60%. So more complex states than simply. It's 75% of those folks, 75% of those folks. When we had about 128 or so folks vote in the primary for the Republican Committee in the town of Western, out of the, let's say, 800 or so registered voters, we got 125 that actually voted in the primary for Republican Committee. So I do believe that we need some varying viewpoints. I think that Mr. Plasky has a lot of opportunity to share those viewpoints with members of the town that may be Democratic or of other political agendas relating more to Democrat, Republican. But as well, there are other Republican, uh, forms, forms of Republicans out there that run like the gentleman up in Ada, Eva Keith Reddick. Who is a, I forget the term right now, but, uh, in any case, um, I think that we need more involvement by more people in the town of Western and generating information or positive feedback from Democrats in the town. I think can only help the issues that the public has with the board not listening to the public issue experienced tonight with the censoring, Harold.
So I'm just saying, you do sound like a justice man. I, I know you're so I'm just saying, you do sound like a pound of justice. I, I know you're
Why did she She needs more down down she jumped right down there come on everything
You're a great child.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Straight here to her.
No, it's just that people
that
Well, they don't, they only go back to and then they sleep in the other we any one who just knew the whole to this. That's what I tried to do is yeah. But yeah, they might I did supervise it. It was me and this yes, she got three products with shit from last time. And my son, if you're going to uh she has some like, oh, yeah. She has she resigned because she was tired of it's what happened, what would happen is that they come to the executive meeting and they look at me behind the scenes and say, oh. So she got tired of it. Plus plus done. There's parts I would obviously choose to and she basically without without she and her husband about this.
So he's not called we tries to
So Amanda and I helped to work together for ten years. For two of those mainly successfully. But I feel Amanda and I obviously, I just like outnumbered on that. You just notice. She
He's he's
And uh independent well, they
So I want
you
I mean, yeah.
She's he's really took the he's he's took the
I remember
Okay. That's why I'm like, do you know what's
Jim, but I couldn't tell you.
Okay. If you go to their website, okay, you can be able to find all the stuff.
That's great.
I'm not sure if I recorded it or not. Well, I had well, not much of a
I just
but that's nice.
Certain
and and no sense so you guys
I didn't know okay.
Technically, um I, I suddenly give up. Something about this one. I had that partial thing for the so what? School pass or the large school school I wear it given it now, all of that's that
Okay, so for those of you watching from where he was saying an extended
that's
except the session, we don't think we've seen these last
As soon as you passes by much
fifteen
town is that kind of practical town. That probably wouldn't have town he looks at the town but when it doesn't are
I don't know that it's necessarily executive session.
Town I was a book basically shaped
that's yeah. I don't find and we know during this executive session so long
So
in all of your all of your changing the medicine and things and the parents and around they're not really the same sort of like now. And you they're not necessarily trying to maybe discuss it. Especially that and it's information and and collective bargaining agreement. And they're discussing
It's like a big
I don't know. You change like you start getting three well, that's I would think that that was trying to in a town I don't just I think each one of the extra feature that part, they think there to be an but that's with I didn't get changed to that collection. And I don't
I don't know.
We knew on the child that were the highway in the in the western you know if the range of pay we don't know if they're within the range of pay that the actual state uses for determining pay rates based on levels of seniority or whatever. We don't know if they're over that. We don't know if they're under that. We don't know if we're paying them fairly. We don't know if we're paying them unfairly. We just have no idea. All we do as taxpayers is pay. Uh, and, and so it's kind of odd here that we don't have access to that information. Um, in a town well, I would say in a state that has an open process of knowing uh individuals that work in positions within New York State, including the town of Western, are allowed to understand see through New York is the website that is used for uh, the public to gain access to that kind of information. And of course, none of that information from those employees uh, in that program in the town of Western are in that see through New York. So there's no way to know how much money they're making. And all we could do if we wanted to kind of determine that figure is to look at the budget for the highway department, subtract off any uh, mechanical equipment or other equipment or other things that are charged on that account or those accounts. And then look at that specific remaining value and then somehow say, you know, for the department, it's, you know, two hundred and eighty two thousand dollars in payroll and benefits for the year. And then divide that by seven employees and that's what you got. Uh, that's basically going to give you an average. An average, but it's not really going to tell you what those folks are making per hour. Again, we don't know what their benefits are. We don't know any of that. We don't know whether in fact that they're in the uh or they're able to be in the New York State retirement system based on that collective bargaining agreement that they work with through whoever they work through with that. And we don't even know that. I think we could probably find out that information, who that bargaining unit is. I don't think that's a secret. But as far as anything in that collective bargaining agreement, we will not know. We don't know if that is just something this town is pulling over our eyes and we really should have access to that. Or whether it's a legal determination based on the fact that it is a collective bargaining agreement and our attorney says that it's private and they don't have to disclose it to the public. So, um, um, I do know that several years ago, Mr. Smith, the highway superintendent is out of the executive session. So now they're meeting about something else. We don't know what it is, but in any case, uh, a few months ago, this, oh, nevermind. I apologize. So we'll get back to the get back to the general stuff that's going on here. There's about three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. It's about 11 people here left from the main meeting. Many folks go with the understanding here that that generally when the meeting is over or when, when, I'm sorry, generally when these folks go into executive session, that the meeting is over, there's nothing else to be decided. And that's clearly, clearly not the case. This board could come back in here. They could vote for the zoning ordinance. They could vote to replace folks on boards. They could vote for anything they want. And with nobody here to see that, there's no real record other than minutes taken by hand or recorded, however they do that. Or with respect to what really is going on in the town of Western. So we're trying to make sure that folks know that just because there's an executive session, doesn't mean the meeting's over. There could be a lot more coming. So stick with us here, okay?
Me too.
I had I had
I'll switch.
Okay.
I spent I had a price.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That's gonna be easy. Yeah.
It's 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 strong.
The time I got out, it was just about forty thousand.
Right. Yeah.
Let's see. The Pauli was I was using we need to settle land. Personally, my my babe the Terry helped us sign her when he was training. And we brought in the Russian run in the special waters. We put five eleven gallons to the top. And I was my do really good. When you got once a paper, you look down, how are that brownish color? It looked like regular have yeah. But you can't
I don't even know why I did not.
Cold day without figuring out chips. You gotta see I don't just like the county that's all I fight. Also, not a fight binder is a type three binder.
And I'm like, holy crap.
A type three binder, seven hundred and fifty pounds of number two stone for top. But they get number two strong enough. That's why it looks a little bit more like a type six. It's a trouble. This is vinyl, molasses. Are not higher than the sun. That's why you see like down the general high but all the
Right.
The sun is just right.
Well, you sound like a highway superintendent.
I want
I wonder why.
Well, right there. That was the dumbest thing I ever had this down the last hundred years. Wow, that
No, it's whether it's a state for the animals or the
No. Next time bring it, bring it. We'll share your dinner.
And we can oh, man.
I said there I said there certain papers, you know, but there's a lot of papers. So you get that story. That's why that sixth guy out there.
Well, the twenty four published that just the afternoon guy could call the midnight guy in early.
Right.
And the midnight guy in the morning afternoon, I hope. So they got there you know. This is actually every big don't jump in the fog. Oh, no.
I was just actually reading
By the time February rolls around.
They don't care. You go oh, you
Really?
Fifty three year old.
Yeah.
Oh, did yeah, sorry, the after this is yeah, that was after that's so I yes, go on.
What was so
mine? This was it's just a vegan
But just what's daddy
No, no.
Yeah.
I mean, that Maybe somebody's got who's they're always
Yeah.
I don't really do it.
No idea.
I was I was burning out. I mean, I I don't know anything. They're almost like
I didn't see this. They were you guys
Yeah.
I don't so yeah, no, but this this was like
Before Kamala makes
Was that his drop? Yeah. The same Yeah. We Oh. No, it's something it's probably something for
I don't
How many
He's gonna be drunk. I think
I might inherit
We're here both on lights. I can't say but um, yeah. I'm here for the this now.
Well,
it's
the
Yeah.
Oh, my shit.
Get real house.
We know that they take that fine and they
They need this for
and
she
Right. Wow. You know, she was for two years. You were right. So it's kind of great. It's actually behind her shoulders. Still
That's like a good lawyer. And what the hell do you have?
I don't
So that's
No, I paid nine hundred dollars. I agree to that. But that's
That that makes up
when I I don't
I mean, can you just learn how I'm a jerk or you follow
Believe you, they hurt it I don't do that running around. I haven't that long time. Say, you could someone called see my go see this I gotta work. Saturday, I make my stop and see you.
Four
I just like this, like
See, and that was actually daddy how you see what is the first morning No, I don't get home but I just this driveway. I got five
I'm underground. So she's got to give him electrician. But he wants the back so that's said that
I think twenty five thousand dollars you yeah. Sales and different firms. She misses you realize I made twenty five hundred dollars. I said, that's ten percent of what you're I don't really the third time I had her trailer was ahead. Trailer Atlanta says, I don't have ten percent of what you got. So what do you think you're buying them?
Yeah.
What I'm glad is I we had this buck is ours. A lot of I
I made that mistake a long time ago.
And that was ours was or the first time
with the
I tried to help you what if it comes absolutely for young
Oh. So, yeah. My
A lot of time talking out the shore of my position. No, I'd be driving by and I'd see turning again going away. Stomping same hands trying to I front the door thinking back to the job of the two hundred way that wall. Just
did
The taro slide
We were far near
This is amazing. Look at that fire barn. Good stuff.
Come in your ear, do brain.
But Paul and things. But I don't
I mean, I see
That's amazing. I hope you don't find out that well.
No. Well,
Oh, yeah. And I'll take a But you said I
Nice extended dog
Yeah. Twenty nineteen May
The new one.
Everybody says I was waiting back. I was out till[1214.80]